Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the July 12th, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Please all rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Put your flag on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now take the roll call. Holly Bem?
Here.
Robert Kulikowski?
Present.
Aaron Levitt Smith?
Yes, present.
Ronald McCondro?
Present.
Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice? Present. Elizabeth Burke?
Present.
Mark Drake? Gary Lungarini. Two last names were absent. Okay? We do have a full presence of regular status commissioners, so Elizabeth, this time, you will be in the alternate position. Onto old business. We have a continued public hearing on application 16-01. As everyone's probably familiar, this is the 80 Climax Road application. We did continue this hearing until two weeks from tonight, July 26th, at 7:00 PM here in the main meeting room of Town Hall. Mr. Rabbit, is that still a location or are we at... So we'll not take any public comment on that at this point, but the public hearing remains open. Related to that application, there is a submittal of an intervenor petition, and I think tonight we should probably take some action on that petition. Mr. Rabbit, could you just give us a little background on if we grant the petition, does it afford that group of people any additional access or rights or anything?
When you have a public hearing process, it doesn't necessarily give them additional rights. It may give them quicker access to information because we have a responsibility to notify the intervenor when new information comes in. But with regards to the public hearing proceedings, they can submit testimony at the hearings. They're allowed to question the applicant. The applicant should respond in a timely manner, but once the hearing closes, they're bound by the same rules that the applicant is, and that is no additional testimony. So once the hearing closes, it doesn't change the process. It allows them to perhaps bring up environmental issues that you perhaps may or may not consider, whether 830G will ultimately allow you to consider them in your decision-making process. I would defer to counsel at that time. In my discussions with counsel, he made the recommendation to staff to advise you to grant the intervenor status, that it does no additional harm to the commission in granting that.
Any discussion on this item? I think based on what Mr. Rabbit has described, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't grant the intervenor status to the app. I guess petitioners. I don't have that petition handy. Do we have a date on it?
You did not bring the whole file with us.
Is it Mr. Case, Steve? Nope.
If you give us a moment, we can give you the date.
He'll probably look back at the minutes and see.
Bill, while we're doing that, should we go back to item three and go through the... We didn't go through the approval of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh-huh. I'm out of order. All right. Let's finish this.
Finish this and then we'll do it.
Okay.
We have the letter from the... For the petition, Mike Liddon's just double-checking on. We have a date, which is May 10th, when that was offered, but we want to make sure we have the receipt.
That is the date of the hearing, May 10th. We have a handy end of year, and so...
But we'll have that stamped in and the receipt. So just that we'll make sure we nod our eyes and cross our fingers.
So bear with us just a moment. Just one? I thought there were a number of people that...
It's just the Tallwood Hollow Properties Chairperson.
Oh, okay. So should you refer to the property or to the...
For other... That's everyone I've submitted. This office submitted is only is that one. You've only received one.
Okay. At that May 10th meeting, I seem to remember, two other people trying to sign their names to a document.
Yeah, if they were submitted or not.
Okay, we don't have it.
Phil Shelley and Bob Machowski. They will have to...
We need to do this right now. You're the speediest copier in the West.
How about the air conditioner? Is that speedy?
I think, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, we did receive three.
Okay.
There's air conditioning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was William C. Nelson?
Yep.
Shelley Perrin?
Yep.
Yep. So two, not three.
No, there's three. So Mr. Case, Shelley, and then Perrin. Are you representing those two other parties?
Oh, there, I'm...
I had represented and Shelley and William.
The petition is signed by Richard A. Case.
Yeah, he noted that.
Notarized it. So do we have three intervenors?
Yes.
Just take a moment to look at that and see that each one...
I think the content is the same.
No, well, they whited out their addresses and then their name, and then at the very back, the signature section.
Okay, yeah, for chairman.
Yep, so the back one is actually the original.
Chairman, can I... Okay, I just want to be sure I understand. So the intervenus... Intervener status, what does that entitle them to? I just want to be sure I'm clear.
It's about environmental issues.
But I just want to be sure I'm clear on intervenor status and what that actually means for them and for the process.
I can take a stab at it if you want me to.
Gina, I just... I don't want to assume I'm understanding this totally correctly, so just to be fair.
Under state statute, on any land use application to a regulatory board, you can intervene on behalf of the environment.
Okay.
So you have three petitions before you where three landowners are proposing the petition to intervene on behalf of the environment on the proceedings associated with application 16-01 associated with Mansour Prime Properties LLC, the project referred to as 80 Climax Road. In their intervenor petitions, they are asserting certain items with regards to the environment. And those are the items that they, in all likelihood, would be submitting testimony on during the process. Again, the applicant has testified at the previous hearing that they had sufficient testimony of understanding that the plans were in the process of being revised. They would like the opportunity to review the revised plans and then submit their information with regards to the environment associated with the petition. It doesn't mean that they lose any rights as a butters or landowners of the general public to bring up any other issues during the proceedings. I've always been told that the intervenor status gives people the most standing when there isn't a public hearing. Because if there isn't a public hearing, the chairman would say, "Look, the applicant's going to present their information. We're going to decide on their application, and there's isn't a hearing, so we're not accepting public comment." Someone intervenes in that process, they have the same rights that the applicant has during the process. But when you have a public hearing, everyone has a right to submit testimony up until the close of the hearing. Again, the intervenor staff is an environmental kind of proceeding, they're bringing up environmental issues. How the commission weighs those in 830G proceedings, I'm sure you're going to discuss that as you go through the decision-making process with counsel's guidance. And your hat with 830G is public health, safety, and welfare.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant intervenor status under Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-19, to the three following individuals who applied for the status on May 10th, 2016. The following individuals are William C. Nelson, 37 Tallwood Hollow, Avon, Connecticut; Shelley Perrin, 37 Tallwood Hollow, Avon, Connecticut; and Jeremy Vierle, representing Tallwood Hollow Properties LLC, 82 Climax Road, Simsbury.
I'll second that.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any...
We don't want to vote?
Okay, shoot. Any abstentions?
No.
So it's unanimous, Janice. Thank you. Okay, now to fix my out-of-order, going to go to item number two, appointment... Item number three, approval of the minutes. Mr. Kulikowski, could you please lead us through that?
Okay. Everybody received a copy of the minutes regarding the June 28th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Any changes or additions to page one? Hearing none. Hearing none. Hearing none. Hearing none. Page five.
I have one on page five, line 217. That should be P O C D. Good point.
And that also goes down to... Let's see, 220?
No, that one's okay.
That's okay.
220 is okay, Attorney Williams.
Yep.
And so it's 221 then?
Yep.
Okay.
So just line 217.
Yes, 217.
Please.
Page six.
Line 350. My name, it just says an A, L E A, P I T T. Thank you.
I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second, so move.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
You good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstained? Thank you, Janice. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so now let's move on to new business. There are no receipts of new applications. However, we do have a referral pursuant to CGS 824 dealing with town-owned property.
Bill, I'd like to recuse myself for this discussion.
Okay, all right. So it's a record show that Ron recused himself. Janice? No, we still have a... We still have a quorum.
So you're okay.
Yeah, remember we got tripped up that last time when we tried to appoint an alternate and then...
Just testing.
...they came back. Thank you. Okay, CGS 824 referral on the proposed installation of solar panels at Community Farm, 69 Walcott Road, assessors map I-02, block 439, lot 002, zone I-1. So do we have anyone who would like to present material? No. Okay. You all are in receipt of the application and the... I guess there were a couple drawings and some photographs?
This wouldn't be the first farm to put up solar panels.
So the application is for a fixed mast but movable solar panel array. Okay? And it looks like it's going to be located to the rear... Well, not to the rear, but towards the barn side of the property. You know, we spent a lot of time last meeting talking about the character of the town and the sense of place regarding the Cumberland Farms application and their LED lights. And I'm a little torn between this application. I'm not sure it's in the spirit of a farm, per se, but that being said, there's still many examples of farms using technology to improve their operations. Also, you know, we have to judge this application as it pertains to the plan of conservation and development. In the plan of conservation and development, there are a couple of notes of green buildings. Now, I would imagine that this would be for development of new buildings or major renovations of existing buildings. Part of the green building strategy is to use passive and/or active solar energy. This certainly would be active, active solar energy. I think that's consistent with the P O C D.
Yeah, the fact that it's a new and different structure on a farm, it promotes the farm. That doesn't bother me too much from... Pardon me, the P O C D. Whatever goals is to support farms and preserve farmland, if a cheaper energy source keeps it around longer, it seems to me that's promotion. Pleasure reference to using green energy sources.
Bill, I share your concerns. If I could, I would just freeze Simsbury in time. Nothing changed. But, you know, then... And that's what the Amish certainly tried to do. You won't see any antennas or electrical poles going into their farms, but... Actually, I don't know about the electrical poles part, but I think that the march of new technologies appropriate for a rural farming community will continue as makes sense, and I personally don't see this as an objectionable addition of technology.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions?
I have a dumb question. When I think of a tracker, I think of something that tracks the sun. I see this 200-feet line. Is it stationary and tracking the sun, or is it moving up and down this 200-foot line?
I believe that 200-foot mark indicates how far away from the road it is.
Oh, okay, so that's the X-Y coordinate. Okay.
It'll be mounted on a... I think if I read the plans correctly, a concrete foundation.
It's at a fixed location that...
Tracks the sun, okay.
...the horizon, the sun as it crosses the horizon.
And so it certainly set back quite a bit from visible structures.
And what's the output? What was the output? Eleven panels and 20 260-watt modules. So that's 500 and 5... 50 200 watts.
Were there discussions in other planning... Or planning, Land use boards about pedestal mounted, ground-mounted solar panels in Simsbury? I had that buzzing around in my head somewhere, but I'm not sure if that was...
Simsbury, again, my experience with Simsbury is historic knowledge from others and my experience since November of 2016. I have not directly been involved in discussions on the residential business level and been involved in discussions at the industrial level of large solar farms. I think that, you know, the chairman's correct in his beating of the P O C D, that there are references in the P O C D with regards to clean energy and green building aspects, as well as farm preservation and supporting agriculture. So these are one of those uses that, although it's locational specific because it's on town-owned land, that it fulfills some of the goals and objectives of the plan. All the regulatory boards may weigh in on its locational value as it affects the community from a site plan perspective. So again, your broad kind of 1,000-foot level is, is it consistent with the P O C D? And I think there are enough general statements in the P O C D to support it in the affirmative manner, and I didn't see anything in a quick review of the P O C D that would negate a favorable opinion.
Jimmy, what happens after this? We're just reviewing it for adherence to the P O C D.
Yes.
Is there any other group that looks at safety? The only question I have, and I know it seems far-fetched, but this will be directly in... Facing toward the sun. It is toward some, I would imagine, some of the... It might be in some of the approach paths to the airport, and I'm wondering if it bouncing the sun's rays toward a pilot could have an issue, and if anyone's even talked to the airport about it.
May I, Mr. Chairman? From a regulatory standpoint, your... This referral comes out of 8-24, which requires any lease, sale, reuse, infrastructure improvements to municipally-owned property or disposal of municipally-owned property to come before the Planning Commission for its opinion with regards to compliance. That gives the selectmen the ability to enter into agreement, or in essence, take it to town meaning, has to go to town meaning for this infrastructure improvement potentially, or at least the board of selectmen, and becoming more familiar with the charter, but not an expert on the charter. But from a regulatory standpoint, any permitting permit that is issued, which this would require, needs a zoning review, which will require an application for a zoning permit and review either by the agent or by the full commission, and most aspects, this would be by the full commission, and the review associated with any potential conflict with any FFA rule may be undertaken at that time.
So that's... We don't have to work like that?
Not the hat you wear tonight.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I agree. I do think this does fit with the P O C D. I do, with conservation and preserving the farm, and it's harder and harder to farm, so whatever they can do to preserve and save. So I... When I read this, I thought it was in line with our P O C D and...
Would you like to turn that comment into a motion?
I would love to. I'm not sure I'm the wordsmith you are, though, so I move to approve or to... Positive referral back to the Board of Selectmen.
Over.
Correct. It goes back to the board.
Under 8-24, your decision-making capabilities are to make a decision that the proposed installation of a solar array on town-owned property is consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2007 plan of conservation.
All right, so I would make a motion that the proposed installation of solar panels on the grounds of the community farm on Walcott Road in Simsbury is consistent with our 2007 goals and objectives of the P O C D.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the proposal or the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mike Liddon, could you ask Ron to re-enter the meeting, please? Okay, Janice, so Ron came back at 7:29 or 7:30, whoever you want to mark that. Welcome back, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, next...
We talked about you behind the back, just so you know.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is preliminary discussions of development of 32 and 36 Iron Horse Boulevard. Mike Gerard and Donald Powers. Gentlemen, floor is yours.
Good evening, and I'd like to start off by thanking you for giving us the time on the agenda to talk about our... You know, on a preliminary basis, bring our project to you so that we can get some comment, and we're looking forward to, once we get some comment from all the commissions, go back to the drawing boards and fine-tune some of the plans for submission of a regular application at some time in the near future, we hope. We've been to zoning and design review yesterday. Tonight here, we're planning. On the 19th, we'll be at Conservation and Wetlands, and then if we have to go back for any summary or additional comments, we'll go back to the zoning commission on the 25th and then proceed from there. We may or may not have to do that. We'll be working on the necessary engineering permits and all the design work that goes into putting a big size, a big project together. And we're... At this point, we're just going through and we're looking for constructive input with regards to what we propose and what you'd like to see on a very important piece of property right in the center of town. People... We've had quite a few people involved with this throughout the process here. Our engineers were Ed Lallien Associates, and also we had Melona McBroom help us. Debbie Bernard from the Bernard ownership is taking care of the marketing end of it. Our architects are Union Studio Architecture and Community Design from Providence, Rhode Island. Architect Don Powers, the founding partner, could not be here today. His associate, Jeremy Lake, will be doing the presenting tonight. And in addition to that, I want to mention that town staff, Jamie Rabbit, Tom Cook, Mike Liddon, and Jeff Shea have been very helpful during the entire preliminary process getting to this point. So... getting to this point, so thanks to them. Very briefly, very briefly, on the property, basically it's 13.86 acres. It's bordered on hundreds of acres, basically, of open space on all three sides, and the Simsbury Center Charrette, which was completed in 2011, designated these three parcels for residential use under the town's SC-5 zone. Matter of fact, it's the only piece of property, Zone SC-5. It's got its own zone, so to speak. As you know, this is our existing construction storage yard on Iron Horse Boulevard and has been since the late 1960s, and once we get through, hopefully get through the process and we get that developed, our plan is to move to Walcott Road, which we have been through recently in the last year or so and get approved there. Regarding the preliminary plans we're presenting today, we've had a dozen or more different people, developers, engineers, come up with ideas on how to lay out this property on Iron Horse, and what we did was we feel we took a lot of the good points from every plan that we looked at and tried to combine them, and we added more through the expertise of Union Studio. So we feel this is a very important project for the center of town, and we look forward to your constructive input. With that, I'd like to introduce Jeremy Lake, who is presenting, and he's got a slide presentation, and we can add to questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy, as Mike mentioned, and I am with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. Just to introduce who we are briefly, as you mentioned, we're from Providence, Rhode Island. We were founded in 2001 by Donald Powers, the gentleman in the back center with the reddish hair and glasses, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but I've been with the firm for about four years now, and our mission really is to make sure that we use our skills as architects and urban designers to make a civic contribution to every project we have, so no matter how big or small, understanding its context and making sure it's making a contribution to the larger community within which it's trying to fit. We offer a number of services in the architectural and community design realms, you can see here, all the way down, including design guidelines, design charrettes, but architectural design, community design, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. To briefly show you the project location, although most of you are probably fully aware of the location and Mike certainly described it, it's a very amazing site because it sits right on the edge of the River Valley, so to the north and west, you get these amazing views out over the River Valley. To the south, you have Simsbury Meadow and the Performing Arts Center, and just to the west, you have basically the main street of Simsbury. So in many ways, this project feels like it's right on the edge of town and right in the middle of town all at the same time, so really a very interesting and unique opportunity. It also sits slightly removed from the lower-density single-family neighborhoods that typically surround the town center, so provides, again, a unique opportunity to do something here that might not make sense in other locations in Simsbury. The circles that are shown there, the inner circle is a five-minute walk or a quarter-mile radius, the larger circle is a half-mile radius or 10-minute walk, and we simply wanted to show that, to show that this project also, folks living here will have the opportunity of walking pretty much all of downtown, all of downtown, but Simsbury Center, Hot Meadow, all of the shops, all of the restaurants, all of the Starbuckses, you know, right up the street. So again, we think it's a site that has a lot of great amenities around it. This is the site as it exists today. As Mike described, it's currently their processing center for the soils out there, a couple, handful of buildings out there. There is some landscape screening along the, the north is now to the right, but along the western edge and the southern edge, they built up some berms and planted some trees that are kind of scrubbing, really meant to sort of buffer it from view currently, but we would obviously revise that moving forward when we turn this into a residential community. Just quickly, the survey of the site, as you can see, it currently just sort of slowly drains to the middle, to a settlement pond that's on that eastern edge, to the north and to the west, that, those are grades actually dropping off, so it's sort of tabled up over the River Valley below, and you can begin to get a sense of the berms there that exist along the western and southern edge. And as Mike mentioned, that any number of schemes have been looked at and done for this site. The top left is the plan that was done during the charrette, that imagined this as a high-density residential community. The top right is a plan that was done by Principal Group on behalf of the town, where it investigated a mixture of housing types, multifamily, townhouses, single-family duplexes, and along the bottom, any number of other iterations of plans done in the past as well. These schemes generally supported anywhere from 150 to 200 units for the parcel. And just also let you know, there was a process that was undergone recently to redefine the property in regards to the FEMA floodplain. I'm not the expert on this, but Mike and town staff actually went through a long and arduous process to make sure that the floodplain lines were correctly shown, so that this parcel could be in fact developed. They were sort of mistakenly drawn. It was suggesting that these areas were prone to flooding, but the existing vegetations and things proved that that had not been the case in the past. So this is just an example of one of the many areas of due diligence that Mike has been looking on in preparation for this. So to show you a little bit about our thought process and where we've come so far, I just wanted to kind of walk you through some of the characteristics of the site that we've been looking at and how we translated those into the design that we wanted to talk to you here about tonight. First and foremost, the existing access to the site is more or less in its center on the western edge off of Iron Horse Boulevard, in alignment with Pent Road, which is a private right-of-way, but it's a direct alignment currently. As a result, the Boulevard along Iron Horse Boulevard, the median is broken at that point, so you can turn in and turn out of the site, and we would imagine that would continue to be the likely primary access for the project moving forward. There's the existing hiker-biker trail along that edge of Iron Horse Boulevard, which we see is a real amenity, both for the community but also is a way of making sure that this community feels as though it's connected back to the larger community. It's a great way for residents of Simsbury at large to see it and be aware of its presence here, since we are kind of tucked behind Hot Meadow. I'd be talking earlier a little bit about the views, but as they exist today, looking out towards the east, you have amazing views out over the River Valley, and to the south, if we were to clear out some of those trees and take down that berm a little bit, there'd be great visual connections also to Simsbury Meadow and Performing Arts Center. And currently, with the exception of the edge of the site, there's this one tree in the middle of the site that currently is in kind of tough shape, but we'd like to try to see if there's the possibility of nursing it back to health as a potential tree save, because we've always found if you can save some of the trees, especially in the middle of the neighborhood, it helps them feel as though they've been there and are a little more established. So that's a potential option we need to understand more fully. So our first inclination was to imagine extending the connection from Pent Road, really from Simsbury Center, through Pent Road down to the site and all the way throughout to the River Valley. Most of the schemes contemplated a loop road at the edge of the development, which we think makes a lot of sense. That allows those views to really be appreciated by the public at large. It's not sort of in someone's backyard. If the circulation was actually at that edge, you'd really be able to appreciate that view in its full glory. And in looking at it, we also thought it would make sense to have a north-south connection within the site itself, both to organize the site but also to reinforce, again, the strong views and connection to Simsbury Meadow to the south. In terms of thinking about some centralized green spaces for the community, we thought it would make sense to build one up around that existing tree, more or less at the center of the community, really serving that neighborhood as a central gathering point, and where the site kind of drops down to that lower area currently, it's one big lawn. We think that that should be maintained as a lawn, potentially with some trails and things that connect down into it, again, a big area that folks could utilize right on the edge of the River Valley. And the resulting developable area is really this sort of four-and-a-half-block scheme that then became the basis for the various iterations of designs that we went through. A few other interesting points right there at the bottom, in the center there, a little red asterisk, currently the way the grading works, it kind of juts out into this great lawn, so you have this sort of promonary point where you get great views out, and we think that the community should really take advantage of that spot and create some sort of moment, be it a gazebo or something, as a communal point of focus. And in a similar light, when we made some sort of connection to Simsbury Meadows, we think there's also potential for something there as well.
Can I interrupt you for one second? When you say the community, these roads will be open to anyone or the community living there?
We, they'd be open to anyone. It's still to be determined whether or not these are private roads or public roads, but certainly the intention here is that this is a community that, this is a neighborhood that wants to feel like an extension of Simsbury, that folks are welcome to come through it. And in fact, I think we are even required to have at least one public point of access to our folks to connect through to the River Valley, because there's going to be a future series of trails and paths and things through there, so. So these were some of the preliminary studies we did that looked at a range of alternatives here within that framework that we just discussed. These show anywhere from 135 to 156 units. Some of the major elements we looked at, those, you can see the loop road concept is there in each one of these, but for instance, in the top-left corner, the connection from Pent Road is thought, it literally is a road that brings you straight through and out to the River Valley, but the north-south connection is shown as a more of a linear court or mews, if you will, so a green connection, not necessarily a roadway. Compare that to the top-right plan where we reversed that. We said maybe there's the potential for the extension, the connection from Pent Road being the sort of linear pedestrian mews with a roadway that goes north-south through the middle. One of the other things we're looking at here, you can see, is the unit types, the types of buildings that we might propose or utilize here. The biggest consideration was what form the multifamily might take here, and so in the top-left corner, the densest type being a fairly standard double-loaded corridor sort of apartment building right up on Iron Horse Boulevard, and at the other end of the spectrum, the lower-left is showing a series of small, three-story, nine-unit walk-up buildings. And again, we were looking at the relative pros and cons of those different approaches, and we've settled on something that's somewhere in the middle of those, and I'll show that to you in a minute when we get to the scheme that we wanted to talk through tonight. But again, these were concepts that we developed internally, that we discussed, but that we also met with Jamie a few times to talk through, to get his thoughts on what he thought made them of sense in perspective of the code and the character that Simsbury is trying to achieve. So going back to this diagram, the couple of things that we did decide, our preference was that the north-south connection be that linear sort of court that pedestrian mews, if you will, keeping the access from Iron Horse Boulevard through the center as a road, if for no other reason than it's the existing intersection, the existing way in, so that the loop road itself could just be right in, right out, and wouldn't necessarily require further interruptions to the median along Iron Horse Boulevard. But that said, we did like the notion of there being some sort of a green space right at the, at the project entry, so that was a way of also trying to capture what we thought were the best qualities of all the various schemes that we showed. And thinking about where we were going to cite the multifamily buildings, as we continue talking about it, we determined that, we still think that there's, it makes a lot of sense to imagine the majority of those are along Iron Horse Boulevard as the big, the major right-of-way. Those would probably be some of the larger buildings within the community, and so it would allow us to step down the scale of the buildings as you get out towards the open spaces at the edge. So a series of those along the top, and in addition, a couple of them potentially at the northern head of that central mews space. And then thinking about the sort of what we're calling the medium-density on our site, the townhouses, our thinking was that there might be one of those buildings in the top-right corner finishing the street front, if you will, along Iron Horse Boulevard, and that we'd have a series of them around that central green space, really framing out that space and making it feel like a room, an outdoor room for the community. And in addition, potentially doing a couple of them as sort of bookends or gateway down at the far end of the central green. And then the remaining frontage on the blocks we're showing is where we would then utilize single-family detached and duplexes. So this is the resulting scheme, as a result of the thinking that I just kind of walked you through. You can see right off of Iron Horse Boulevard at the central entry, small formal green. We have the multifamily on either side of that. Knees that I mentioned is trying to be a sort of compromise between the biggest of buildings and the smallest of buildings. The intention here is that each of what looks like one large footprint would in fact be, it would feel more like two smaller buildings that just happen to have a small connection at the back. That small connection would allow us to have a shared lobby and a shared elevator for both halves of the building, if you will, and I'll show those in a little bit more detail in a moment. And then as you come down through the extension of Pent Road, you can see that informal green around the existing tree that begins to open up the views out to the River Valley beyond, and you can see that north-south cottage, what we're calling the cottage court here, that linear pedestrian mews that moves through the site. We thought that would be a place to concentrate a lot of our, the single-family detached where it really has sort of a little cottage court feel, a more intimate feel at the center of the community, allowing the larger unit types to be sort of at the edges. Another thing I should mention is, within the blocks themselves, we're showing these shared parking lanes, so this is how the residents would access their parking garages. Each of the smaller, the single-family units would have a one- or two-car garage accessed off of that rear parking lane, so not from the street, the public realm, and likewise, the multifamily buildings, what we're showing, the smaller sort of pink rectangles that are on the mid-block area, that, those are a series of individual garages that would be there for probably a third of the units, and then the remaining spaces would be in just a very small parking field at the center of the block. So a real effort here to put all of the parking and the service needs behind the units so that when you're on the street or in the green spaces, it's really just about the front doors, the front porches, the interface with the public realm. This scheme shows 135 total units, but we're still trying to figure out where we might land in that 135 to 155 sort of range, which I think will play out as we continue to talk about the unit types. We haven't fleshed out the unit types in any great detail as of yet, so our hope is that no matter what we do, it'll still have this sort of rough framework in character. It's just a matter of bigger, smaller units, more or less units. This is a bird's-eye view of the community, as if you were in a hot-air balloon with Simsbury Meadow to the lower left, that great lawn and the, and the River Valley off to the right, and you can see how, you know, the homes really do hold up the periphery of the blocks, again, with the private uses to the inside, public uses on the outside. A few diagrams attempting to show that, in this case, trying to highlight what we're calling the public realm, the streets and the green spaces within the community. The top right, those dashed red arrows, from the top left, that would be from Simsbury Center, that's, that's Hot Meadow coming down Pent Road, and you can see how that road and that sequence of green spaces really then connects, comes straight through out to the River Valley beyond, and then crossing that top-right corner would be one of those smaller multifamily buildings, and that linear connection through that cottage court, that pedestrian mews, all the way down and out to Simsbury Meadow, and then the blowups around the edges, showing those areas in more detail. We have copies of the packet we'll give you guys after this, so you can.
The, the mews there, is that strictly non-motorized? You know, no automobiles go on that? Just sidewalk-type of access?
Sidewalk and landscape areas, and I'll show you an example of that here that'll make it a little bit clearer. The only exception I would say to that, if it comes to it, is we might have to make some sort of concession for fire safety or emergency access. Typically, we're able to do that by utilizing the parking lanes to the rear of the units, but that's something we always have to clarify. Even if that became required, we'd do it in a way where it still felt as if it was a reinforced sidewalk or something along those lines, so generally folks wouldn't go down there if there was a chance, potentially emergency access to you. Emergency access would be required there.
So there's basically just one entrance for all these units?
There's the central entrance, but there's also, that loop road does connect back on Iron, so technically there's three entrances to the community.
You said Pent Road is a private road?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Isn't this asking a lot of Pent Road?
So we are aligning with Pent Road because that's what's there today, but we don't necessarily think of Pent Road as being the access. Iron Horse Boulevard will still be the access. It's a good question, it's come up in the other meetings we've had so far, and we certainly know we're going to need to do a traffic analysis and we'll understand all of that, how that works. But our expectation is folks will generally be coming in from Iron Horse or going out on Iron Horse. I think Pent Road will really serve as the pedestrian connection when folks are walking up to get into the, up to Hot Meadow itself. That's the direct pedestrian access, but I don't think cars would generally choose to go that way.
You'd be surprised.
Talking about Pent Road, my knowledge, my historical knowledge is a tad spotty, but is that the historically significant road where the Revolutionary troops marched off from town to the Farmington River to join George Washington's forces? I, I'm a little...
They marched to Windsor.
They marched to Windsor. So, I mean, and, and I'm...
And that is the road, and it's, what did you, I might add, that is a, we have an access through, we have a right-of-way through Pent Road, which is part of the post office property, and our utilities that feed our facility down there now do come down Pent Road. Pent Road is, kind of goes with the, the right-of-way would kind of go with the property connect, so to speak, however, we wouldn't encourage people to use it as an access point. At some point in life, the post office may change or relocate or be redone, and I think that Pent Road could serve, could serve it much better, be able to serve this, you know, Iron Horse Boulevard or anything that goes on Iron Horse Boulevard would be a matter of time.
No, my, my, my point is not, yes, that post office area is not, is outside your jurisdiction, but I'm very thankful that you're looking toward that route through because of the historical significance that that once played in the town.
Yeah.
And again, my question's always, will the town people get a look at that?
Right, right.
And they'll be able to come down and, and... And they'll be able to come down and absorb that sense of history, and you have that nice prominent, preliminary point and...
Yeah. And again, it's very preliminary, but it could very well be that we try to play that up a little bit more. Certainly a little formal green space, maybe that's the place to relocate the marker, it'd be more visible, or whatever this case might be. Yeah, that's come up as well.
Okay. And it does seem like you've already been sensitive, and you've been looking at a vantage point, and it's, I must say, I like that very much. I'm very moved by the history of the town.
Indeed. So moving forward, so this, again, highlighting the public realm. The flipside of that is the private realm. Public realm is what we're looking at in a moment again. This is the private realm. Again, basically those four and a half blocks, the interior areas of those blocks in the top-left, that's a little blow-up trying to show that, again, that's where the parking occurs, the cars are in back. You can sort of see the duplex to the top-right, the garage doors there off of the back, a small apron connecting to the private parking lane behind there. You can also get a sense of the low, the couple of garage spaces that might be affiliated with the apartment building. But again, this is internal to the block, not visible to the public at large coming by. The central bottom image trying to show that the green spaces between and behind units, we imagine these are the areas that the residents themselves might have a private patio or a private deck, a landscaped area, so that they have their own sort of personal space, if you will, outside of the more public realm. And so that's what this was attempting to show. And then this is a rendering showing that that's Iron Horse Boulevard with the entrance, new access point into the community here. So Penn Road would be just sort of here down to your left, showing that small formal green. This also begins to show the character of the architecture a little bit. Again, we have a lot of work ahead to kind of figure it out. But what we were trying to show is, with the multifamily buildings, even though they look sort of large in footprint, the intention is to really break those down so that, you know, to the left, that sort of brown with the white addition is really half of that larger building, but meant to feel like a smaller structure. And in fact, the piece at the corner might read as one larger building, but then with additions off of that. So we know we need to be very sensitive to the scale of those buildings, and we're going to try to do a number of tricks relative to sort of breaking the plane and breaking the roof lines and changing potentially the materials and things along those lines to really bring down the scale of those buildings so that they feel like they're appropriate and fit within the context of the community. On the whole, those being three stories, and you can see as you get back into the community, the duplexes and the single families themselves will be in that two, two-and-a-half, three-story sort of range.
Didn't the, maybe it's only on Hot Meadow, but didn't the charrette talk about kind of a, like a wall, that the buildings would only be, new buildings 15 feet or something off the street?
Yeah, so...
Does that not pertain to Iron Horse?
It does pertain, yeah. I mean, along Iron Horse Boulevard itself, I'm not entirely positive, but the right-of-way of Iron Horse Boulevard is actually quite a ways back from the curb. So even though it looks like we have a big setback, those buildings themselves are still only about 10, 15 feet off of the right-of-way. We actually think that that distance there is a nice thing, that little bit of breathing room between the buildings and the street is appropriate. That's where the bike trail kind of comes through. And our hope would be to continue, you know, this is just a rendering, we need to figure out what the landscaping in there really is like. But currently, when you're by Simsbury Meadow, there's that great regular rhythm of those big beautiful street trees, and I think we'd like to imagine that that continues through here. So it'll feel like a natural extension of the stuff that's out there today.
There's also a rendering that you'll get to in a little while, and you'll see how the porches and the sidewalk, the width of the road, and the different types of roads that we have in here, they're all a little bit, they're a little different, and you'll see how that works. So when you drive around on the roads, which, by the way, could be public roads, that is an option. As you drive around, you will see no driveways, no garages. All you'll see is the front porches and the buildings as you drive around, like you're driving around a little neighborhood.
Will there be some provisions for affordable housing?
I think by design, the way, what we're coming up with as far as, we're hoping to have something for everyone. So we're going to have some very, we're going to have, go anywhere from studio apartments to basically just a couple four-bedroom units, I believe, but for the most part, two and three. And so there's something for everybody, and there's rental, there's condos, there's duplexes, there's, it's a variety of housing. It's not just one particular, one building or six buildings of the same thing. It's something that when you go there, you'll have an opportunity to choose whatever suits you, that will suit you in regards to residence.
But there will be designated affordable housing.
Right, we're just doing that through design, really, to try and provide some...
And I think it's better without all of the deeding issues to just have some, rather than make it an artificial construct.
I remember when this property first came up for discussion quite a while ago, that one of the first things that came up, some kind of affordable housing plan, but that's gotten all sullied, so.
What are the, because studios, so, I was, because I was just trying to envision square footage, like how, so what's the biggest and what's the small?
Yes, so currently, and this is preliminary, so...
Exactly.
Exactly, because we haven't run all the numbers yet, but on the apartment buildings, we're thinking the studio started at about 590 square feet. So it's not New York, I mean, it's not 180 square feet, and it's not San Francisco or Boston, but for here, it's probably, it's small enough. But you can do a nice junior at that. So that's probably the studio apartment. We're about 15% of the mix on that, just kind of an entry-level thing. And then mostly apartments are 750, 750 to 1275 square feet, one and two-bedroom, maybe junior one-bedroom, and a real one-bedroom, you know what I call it, full-size, and then there's some two-bedrooms.
Did I hear you say you're 15% of the units?
We're thinking.
Again, this is all preliminary. Yeah, this was just to give us a second...
But we do want to offer some units that, you know, are not $1,500, $1,800 a month to rent, because not everybody can afford that.
And, you know, we get criticized for not having enough affordable housing, but I believe this commission feels that that's an important thing for our POCD. That's great.
What was that figure you just said?
Well, we're thinking that the rental units, and then, and we've talked about whether the multifamily buildings could be rental or for sale, so that's still up for debate. We're going to build them to for-sale standards.
Right, we're going to build them to condo standards, but they could be rented if they have to be. But we prefer to see them sold rather than rented.
But it really depends on the market, because there really are no truly walkable apartments to the center of town. So this is unique in that regard. You can walk, there's half a mile or three-quarters in the snow, you know, so this is really walkable. So it can go either way, but we had 590 to 1275 square feet as the apartment target. And then when you move into the townhomes and duets, we saw that as 1375 square feet to about 1825, kind of a mid-range. Three-bed, two-plus, three-bedrooms, no four-bedrooms in there. You probably don't need it. That's emptiness removed down, or it's for a young couple or what have you. And then on the single-family detached, which we're calling our small-lot single-family, we're at 1575 to 2200. So that's your most spacious, if you will. And that pretty much covers a lot of ground for 590 square feet to 2200 then. And there's about, I don't know how many plans you have in New Jersey, probably nine plans. That's a lot of writing.
And again, I think the overarching goal here is to fit the sort of missing middle. Simsbury seems to have a lot of, you know, larger single-family, large lot homes, and then there are rental apartment communities. And this is trying to fulfill the gaps between those two, so that there are options here that would be here that may not be here currently, or if they are, they're in very limited numbers. So that's kind of the overarching goal with what we're trying to do here, so.
We're trying to not overbuild the site, which is really difficult, you know, when you're thinking of developing, most people tend to overbuild it all, so we're trying to be cautious of that.
And like, that's what we were showing earlier, some of those schemes were up to 200 units, and we began to realize if this whole thing was multifamily, that's not really what we think is appropriate. So we've been, that's the game we've been playing, is trying to find where's that right balance, that right kind of feeling and character. So let me get through the last couple slides here real quick. This is a street section through one of the typical streets. Top-left, a key plan showing, this is that loop road going around, and also that road in the center coming off of Iron Horse Boulevard. Intended to be two-way travel lanes, as narrow as the fire marshal will let us do. We intend to have a parallel parking on one side of the street, really thought of primarily as being for visitors, people coming to visit you would have a place to park, they don't need to go into the mid-block area, they can park right by your front door. The streets would be tree-lined, the trees doing a nice job of creating a buffer between the vehicular portions and the pedestrian portions, while also creating shade and a lot of character, again, in keeping with most of the residential streets you'd find around Simsbury. Sidewalks on both sides of the street, and then front porches or covered stoops being a thing that then moderates between that public realm into the private realm within the homes themselves. And the code actually says there's a 12-foot maximum front setback here. So I think that's about where we would be, because if we want to get a six, seven, or eight-foot porch, you know, we need to be right about at that number where to get those things to fit in there. And then two other quick sections to the left, this is that cottage court, that pedestrian muse that you were asking about earlier. So again, purely a pedestrian zone, so there's a sidewalk, or sidewalks moving through the center, otherwise it's landscaped. But again, that is the front door for the units that are in those locations, so that is the way your guests would approach, that's the way you come and go if you're walking into town, sort of a thing. And then lastly, on the right, highlighted in blue, this is those private parking lanes in the middle of the block. So again, as wide, only as wide as we need them to be to make sure they meet whatever emergency access needs are required, but that's how you access the garages in the rear, or the limited number of surface spaces that we had for the multifamily units.
So it does look like there would be limited parking, though. So if you had multiple guests at your house, it does look like that might be somewhat an issue.
Well, that's where the on-street parking is a benefit, because it's the most flexible version. So in the mid-block, it's limited, because that's only intended for the residents, and we're allowing for two spaces per unit for the single-family units. We're at one space per multifamily unit in that mid-block area. And then on-street, we have like another 60 spaces, so almost half a space per unit for guests. So you have a party one weekend, your 20 guests can park there, you know, the next weekend, somebody else. You know, 4th of July, maybe it's a little crazy, I don't know, but that's everywhere. So these are just a couple of images of other projects we've done to begin to give you a sense of the character of what we're hoping to do here as well. The top-left is a project of ours in Warwick, New York, showing that idea of a front porch community. Again, this is very much in keeping with things you'll find in Simsbury as well. The porch opening right up to the public sidewalks where your neighbors would be walking by. The lower-right showing you, it's a project in Concord, Massachusetts that we've done. That's that cottage court idea, so again, a non-vehicular zone, just sidewalks and landscaping, but again, that's where residents have front porches and an opportunity to see their neighbors and interact.
So your intention, I think, if you can combine some of that stuff, is a variety of roof lines, a variety of looks, a variety of colors? Okay. One of the things I don't like about Carson's Way, for example, as nice as they are, is they're all the same thing.
Yeah.
Everything looks the same.
Yeah.
You can tell it was all built by the same guy at the same time.
Yeah.
The idea of mixing colors and roof lines and building heights, I think that'll make this a lot more interesting.
Well, Carson Way probably has five different designs.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what you're talking about here.
Very different.
And again, this is, this is just, these are precedents from other projects, we haven't done a specific design here yet, but it's certainly our intention to do what you're describing.
Up on your upper-left-hand corner, one of the things I liked about the charrette is that they tried to envision architecture that already existed in town when they showed designs to the public, that was very well-received. And it just so happens, I thought that's what you were doing with that yellow structure, which looks a little bit like the original...
Gemini.
Not Gemini.
No, no, no. The other one.
Yeah.
Maple tree.
Maple tree.
The old maple tree.
That's what you were doing, and I hope you consider those things, because we have a lot of beautiful architecture that could be used as models.
Emulated, absolutely. And that's, the last slide I have is just showing that Debbie's been a great resource for us, giving us a sense of what is appropriate to Simsbury. These are homes in the larger area, and understanding what is appropriate, what kind of materials would you find here, what kind of massing is appropriate.
See, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a quintessential New England town. It really isn't. It's a little Victorian, a little colonial, and I think that's our strength, that's what makes it look good.
And again, our intention, obviously, we want the resulting neighborhood to feel cohesive, but we're definitely going to do it in a way where each resident would feel like it's their house, their own individual feel. And so we're going to, that we're definitely intending to create a lot of variety, a number of different types of porches and different materials.
And again, in addition to these more outlying suburban, the outlying suburban areas, the center of town has some very rich architecture to emulate.
We have studied Masako in the main street, and we spent hours driving through pictures. So we're kind of, we're honing in, I think, on style.
It's a real mix.
Just starting to...
Yeah.
I agree with Alan, the mix is very nice.
When we were looking at the surrounding community, very few of the single-family houses had brick, but you find a lot of brick at Simsbury Center. So it was one of the things we were saying, that maybe this is the place where it's appropriate to do a limited amount of brick on a residential building.
Some redstone.
Just to help sure, and definitely the stone, to make sure it feels like it knits into the...
And by the fake stuff, it'll still look good.
That's not like you.
Fake bronze still looks good.
Good fake stuff, not bad.
And I agree with Alan about the mixture, not cookie cutter. Like the mill, those things behind mill rights, it's a pretty cookie cutter back there.
Well, you know, the difference, in my opinion, there is, that's kind of off the beaten path. Someone really has to turn down there. So many people spend time at Iron Horse Boulevard, whether it's soccer fields, or the concerts, or everything, this has to be a home run. This has to be something where people say, "Simsbury is, what a place to be, look at this development." It can't be something where, you know, people drive by and say, "How did this happen?" That can't happen.
I'd voice it like this, I wouldn't want somebody to drive by something and think New Jersey, Long Island, that's the last thing I'd want. Are you looking for comments?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let me let you finish, I'm sorry.
Just an example, go back one slide, Jamie, if you could. Give me two, another one. There you go. Okay, the upper-left-hand corner, you see a large building, those large buildings there? We're looking at plans that basically that would be suitable for a duplex. You wouldn't even know it was a duplex. Okay, so the idea is, when you drive by, you'll see this house, this beautiful house, but there'll be basically two units in the house, completely separate, and all the garages, again, are feed to the back and to the alleys, for lack of a better term, but they're fed from the back for the access, you call them something different.
And the yellow one, it's very provocative of the maple tree. So Jamie, do we have to excuse ourselves if we like it so much we want to move into it?
Some of the comments have been that I would move that.
Right, I said, this asks me something that people aspire to live to. All I ask is that, you know, to the greatest extent possible, don't cut corners. I understand that, you know, economics play a big role in this, but this is going to be so visible, it has to be something that the architectural magazines write about.
Yeah.
You're the first up to the plate.
No pressure, I know.
Right, Mike.
What's that?
You're the first up to bat with the charrette. You really are. This is going to set the stage for a lot of other stuff. My wife and I take the dog, drive down to Simsbury just to find a place to walk. So we walk around with the dog, we stop, and we buy an ice cream or something. There's, I know there's a market.
A big market.
Yeah, our big house, the kids are out, you know, we would love to live in a village environment, we can't find them. We can't find them.
There's your house in the lower-right-hand corner.
Yeah, I have a feeling you sell this out just like that.
I kind of like the one on... But, so there's friends of ours, we were talking about this just a couple weeks ago, and they said, "Oh, if they had that, I'd be interested too." I mean, we give up the yard, we have a nice place, I don't have to worry about my lifetime putting a roof on, I hope it, I probably won't. That we can walk, I'd like to park my car and not see that damn thing for about two days, three days at a time. I'd like to be able to walk to a market. There'll be people, I think, that look at this and say, "Oh, it's all residential, no commercial." This will spawn commercial. I really think so, Long Island, that's my opinion.
And we think the town is the commercial. We talked about this today.
And if this inspires more of this kind, then we're going to see those new east-west streets we talked about on the charrette, more density. Density has become a little bit of a question, a word around it, but this is where it belongs, right, in my opinion, in the town center, and that house begins.
And there's no residence on any side.
Right.
You know, who's going to complain?
And there's open space, it's gorgeous back there, by the way.
I would, yeah, 200, I know, I would go, I would be cautious with the number of units. And not to say, you know, scale way back, but the other thing is, it's really nice, and that's a nice area to be able to sit outside, so to be able to have decks or patios that wouldn't be overlooking garage, I don't know if there's any way to put in.
See, what I think I see here is porches.
Well, maybe that's it, the front porch.
We have neighbors that have decks. She actually sits in her garage with the door up, so she can face the street and doesn't use her deck. But this is the way, when I grew up, we grew up with front porches, that's where you sit.
See, I grew up with decks.
Our hope is to try to find a little bit of a, so depending on what your map mood is that day.
Down on that Greenway area, you could sit out on the front porch, just to be able to, because it really, it's so nice in the summer, and that's such a nice area to be able to sit out, and maybe, depending on where you're located, if you're overlooking the.
Simsberry Meadows, you can watch the desert.
Right, right.
We thought, we thought.
Come on over and have a look.
This is more urban than suburban, so you don't need the deck.
It's just the porch.
The Great Lawn, we're calling it.
Yeah, yeah, the Great Lawn. So I just, I love that outdoor area.
So the outdoor, yeah, we have to go really unit by unit, and we've done that yet.
My wish for you is that this is so desirable, and I, you know, Debbie and I worked on the economic development task force, and people talked about this sort of concept all the time, that, you know, I think half the task force would want to see this just so they could move into it. My desire for you would be that it would be so desirable, so many people would want it, that you wouldn't have to cut any corners, and you would still have that 15% reserve that you could make affordable, so that.
That really, I don't want to say that's your gift back.
And promises all the values of the town.
It's your gift back.
All the values of the town.
As an architect, can I ask you a question? Do you find the center zone regulations really difficult to work with?
Well, you're really the architect. Jeremy's the architect, I'm just the marketing consultant.
Specific enough that it's easy to know what'll be approved?
We find it easy.
The SC5 zone is pretty specific on what it has.
But that's not a negative to you. We, I always thought that was a positive, because now you know what you can do.
We got the rules, I like the rules.
What's the SC5, is it specific for this person?
This just as personal.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the Simsbury Center, it's form-based, so it's driven by the shape, aesthetics, and interrelationship between building forms and the street, and less about what goes on the lot.
So is this the town center code?
This is within the Simsbury Center, but as Mike Gerard said, I mean.
Is this TC town center code?
Well, Simsbury Center code.
Okay, SC5.
So within the Simsbury Center code, there are five distinct areas. SC5 is the most distinct, because it's only one of the properties, and it's the property that is subject to this presentation tonight. Within the SC5, it's form-based, but within the use categories, it only allows one use, and that's residential. It does not allow commercial, and they formulated the code. And I think it was originally, we've had these discussions in Turling, I think the target for this site was residential, because it had marginal value, it has Class A retailer office. The only thing it lent itself potentially was to a large box for retail, because of its size being eight acres. So what, Whole Foods and 125, 150 space parking lot, but there, yes. But that was contrary to what the Simsbury Center code was trying to achieve.
And the charrette was not.
And the charrette was in.
Charrette, yes.
Mike Gerard has worked with me and our department for the past seven-plus months, and I commend him for where he is now. When he first met with me, he articulated his goal to have an award-winning project. I think for the first four to five months, we had discussions involving the fact that he wasn't headed in a direction of creating an award-winning project, and at some point, he made the leap of faith to bring on talent, to get him to the point of where he is today. And again, you know, he's been before two commissions. The project to date had, has been well-received. There are questions and issues in scale and scope and density, and why is it all residential, and why isn't there any commercial or office? Right now, the code doesn't allow it. But I think he's headed down a path to potentially having an award-winning project. As commission members have mentioned, I have concerns and reservations over time of how the project evolves. Mr. Gerard and I have had those conversations, that he is still committed to bringing a project, because that does not remove those cosmetic items that will water down what you are seeing. So it is showing you something very nice and taking you somewhere very wonderful, that in the end, that restaurant that you thought you were going to, doesn't turn into driving up and talking to the microphone to order your food, that it's actually served on a plate with real utensils.
Time frame, wild guess, two, three years?
What, timeframe?
Time frame, what would you guess?
Well, I think, once we get through the preliminary process with the commissions, which we're following our way now, we're going to continue, we're going to start talking to some builders, developers, and what we're going to do is, we're going to, it's a toss-up for whether or not we take it, the next step, to do some engineering and actually design it, or whether we should start talking to whoever's going to want to actually build it. So, the thing is, is that now, our excavation contractors will do all the, everything from the ground down, but from the ground up, we have to depend on the expertise of people. And this is, you know, it's quite a mixture of different types of residential units here. The multifamily are different construction than the single-family and the duplexes and so forth. So, yeah, so some builders will work with other builders sometimes to make sure it happens. The key is to have plans that they have to follow, set some of them. And basically, once we design, once it gets, once it's designed, and that's something that I will, you know, we will oversee, that's what we're going, that's what's going to be salable to whoever's going to develop. I'd love to be able to develop, because it's a very large project, we have.
The timing's pretty good for you, though. I see that the market and timing and financing is kind of on your side.
There's a lot of people who might live in a place like this.
But we see taking it through the design development process, meaning, you know, land plan, architecture, landscape architecture, product design, get it designed, design, because then your concepts are complete that way, and there are several builders who are just waiting to see.
Waiting, just waiting to see what we can come up with.
How we're putting this together, and I think, you know, Mike, we'll be able to decide who's the best building partner. I think that's what that's going to show.
One thing Elizabeth mentioned to me, since this was just general input, I think our alternate can speak, right? But since I've already introduced your concept, she, the concern she has, and I do share this, is that perhaps the most clever thing you're going to be working with, and you did mention you're going to look at, as you called them, tricks, and you've already got some nice ideas to take a building and break it up, but, you know, what the town will see the most of will be this view here.
Yeah.
On the multifamily units, and that'll probably have the most, require, you know, the most care to blend in. And again, that's what the charrette showed, they always showed the outward facing to the public streets as really reflecting the history of the town.
Absolutely.
The historical argument. In fact, what they did is cut and paste town, already existing town center buildings in the charrette, you probably saw the result.
Yeah, and the design review board warned us that those would be the things they would be probably scrutinizing the most heavily. We're well aware, from the get-go, we knew that that was our, probably our biggest challenge, is the design of the multifamily buildings, but we're confident that we can, we can get there with everybody's input and continuing to push it through, so.
So to continue what I said, Holly, so people going down Iron Horse, that's what they're going to see. So the charming mews there, they're not going to see that, they're going to have to enter the development to do that. I probably wouldn't encourage that too much, and probably the people living there wouldn't enjoy it too much, people outside coming through. So all the most charming aspects of your design are not going to be seen from Iron Horse. That, those views are going to be blocked by those three-story apartment buildings, with the roof line over that, so essentially, they're four stories high.
But if you put the tall buildings in the back, you won't see them up.
Right.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that when you started your question. We've positioned those buildings so that they're tucked up against a very, a big change in elevation, from Iron Horse Boulevard to Towne 10, how Ben's Street is like this. And those buildings, all you'll see basically, is you'll see some of the rooftops, but you're not going to see, they'll be tucked in toward, toward Iron Horse. Then, the people in these buildings will have good views right over all the lower buildings that are in front of them. And you, the big buildings, if you put them at the other end, toward the Great Lawn there, we would lose the view for everybody. So we put, we tried to position those big buildings in a place where they could be least offensive, so to speak.
So they're the lowest, they're in elevation below Iron Horse?
No, below Hop Meadow.
So will people on Iron Horse still see Talbot Mountain? Or are they going to see the buildings instead?
Well, but you'll have the opportunity to, you'll be able to drive, the whole idea of that out, that road, that perimeter road, is so that people can walk through there and/or drive through there, and be able to enjoy the views, because whether you're looking at the meadows, or whether you look, it's a beautiful view in the back. I know you've probably never been there, but it's, it's really where that Great Lawn is and everything else, it's absolutely gorgeous back there.
Today, you don't see.
You don't see it now.
Because of the trees. Which I want to say, I think you've done a great job of actually hiding the works back there. I bicycle to work every day out on there, and I didn't know it was so extensive until we saw the aerial view.
Yeah, it's a construction storage area, that's exactly, that's what it was when we bought it.
It won't block it any more than it's blocked today.
And I think, in some ways, the fact that we have the three different points of entry, each of those becomes another opportunity for a visual, at least corridor, out there. And our intention with including that green space at Iron Horse, was that it was beginning to suggest, hey, there is a nice little public realm in here. Like, in our initial concepts, we didn't have anything up there. We began to realize, we need to begin to start suggesting that there is this wonderful thing through the middle of here. But I will say, that cottage court, I think, while it would be available to the public, my guess is it will feel in some way so intimate, that it will be primarily the residents that live here that would go up and down it. And you or I, if we were just passing through, well, I would go in it, because I snoop everywhere. But I think the average person would probably stick to the roads themselves and look down and say, "Oh, that's a really cute little spot, it looks lovely in there," but they...
There's a lot of people who walk down Iron Horse, they might all want to go and take a peek out the back.
I just had a safety question, the property's proximity to the cove in the back? Did somebody wander in there, some little kid getting drunk, or is it fenced off, or...
They haven't really talked about that.
I just wondered if.
It's not that deep.
Is it like Pickrell Cove? Like two or three feet?
It's Barber Cove, it's called Barber Cove. And, as my father told me, so we named it that. And it's, I guess at one point in time, it was part of the river, but the river is about 1,000 feet to the north, about 2,500 feet, right from the back of the property to the river. It's quite a ways, it's not, it's not, the river is not right there. The cove is the cove. And there's, of course, there's the beavers have made, they've got a water feature, so to speak, a pond, where there used to be trees. So what happened was, when the beavers blocked it 20 years ago, all the tree side, so it made a spectacular view out the back, and all you see is the mountain, and there's, I think you can see one or two houses on the mountain, other than that.
And that property's owned by who? Where the Beaver Pond is.
Towne Simsbury. Towne Simsbury owns the property through the back. The state of Connecticut owns the property to the north, and Towne Simsbury owns the property to the right. So we're surrounded by open space. And there's up to somewhere 400, 500 acres altogether, if you count all contiguous there, down the river valley, of open space. There's 163 acres right behind.
There is no significant drop-off to the cove, it goes down in coves, it would be no different than all of the trails and things you have by the river, and it'd be the same level of concern, that some kid could obviously go wandering into it. At least we don't have alligators.
I think we should address Elizabeth's concern, and I made a note of it, in terms of like the sidewalks on the Iron Horse side, you know, how we have those mews in between, which is really some of the intimate charm between the cottages. I think it might be interesting just to look at our sidewalk design, because if we already have Iron Horse, which is a straight path, our paths in front of the multifamily can do a little meandering, can be a little more casual, and that, that'll bring some.
That's true, that's true.
It does need to be careful.
That zone itself doesn't, I think, that we haven't completely explored.
We have, we haven't completely designed it, but that's a good point.
And you do have, you do have, there is going to be a direct linkage with walking paths. I'm just thinking, like, from my backyard, I can go to Ethel Walker, to Towne Forest, it's great, you know, I don't have to drive my car, and I can go right in, and so.
Right there.
It's right there.
It's right on the path.
Well, no, what, I'm not talking about just Iron Horse, I'm talking about, are there trails connecting?
There are trails that they've been looking to improve.
Okay.
I don't know where that is, and the whole works is.
The one on the back of the Performing Arts Center there, in the field, there's a trail that comes up the back.
There's actually.
I'm talking trails, I'm not just talking.
Over through the back there, and those are, they're looking to improve those to a certain extent, so they can walk. And that would be, if you look at that map right there, you'll see in the Great Lawn, you'll see that one line that runs straight down? That's Penn Road, that would be the dirt road that goes all the way back to the river.
Okay.
So we have plenty of opportunities for those connections to occur if the town develops the trail network in this area.
More on the engineering side of things, this is kind of a low area there, how are the utilities going to be handled? Because this, I imagine, you know, sewage treatment plant's right down the street, but you guys are kind of at the same level, do you run into a problem with pumping? I don't know the elevations over there.
There's product that may be pumped, but we're going to raise the site, the entire site, two feet, from the highest points in some place, five feet in the center of the property, but it averages out all the way through about two feet. And by doing that, that'll allow us to allow gravity soar toward Iron Horse Boulevard for most of the houses, and all the multifamily. The last line may be questionable, but it's very close. We can run at half percent pitch if we have to, but maybe they don't like it. Usually we have to run at least one percent pitch. So, and then the source is not very deep, the source is on the other side of Iron Horse Boulevard, Iron Horse shoulder. So we're looking into that, we're trying, we're going to get that figured out, but we may have to pump some lanes, some small, some of the houses, so we might have some individual pumps of houses.
Mr. Chairman, the comments from you tonight, the comments from Design Review, and the comments from zoning, were all similar, you had a little different take on everything, and as well as staff that's been talking with Mike and with Union Studios since their involvement, that the aesthetics of how this project presents itself to Iron Horse Boulevard is extremely critical, that the project doesn't potentially overwhelm the streetscape that everyone has grown accustomed to, that it needs to respect the density and style that have, and patterns that have occurred in town, and that's the challenge of the architectural team to do so, so that you have that opportunity. It's a very interesting project, because right now, as Holly has mentioned, Mr. Gerard has done a very good job of hiding all of his activity internal to the site by landscaping and berms. So with regards to views of the ridge line to the east, if you stand in front of Mr. Gerard, you look at vegetation and you can't see it. So there are opportunities to expand that. If you come in from a southerly direction headed north, and you look past the packed Performing Arts Center and the soccer fields, you see a line of vegetation, and you can't see beyond that. So there are opportunities, it's kind of like when you eat, you first experience food visually, that, to me, the perspective doesn't begin at the front door, it begins down by Rotary Park, and the approach to this development is going to be very different. So your experience is going to be well before you enter the front door. It's going to be on the approaches more north and south. It's also going to be the interrelationship between Hop Meadow, Iron Horse, and the development. And we talked about potentially doing a perspective for elevation of this building, Hop Meadow, Simsbury Shox, Iron Horse, and then the development there. So you can see the scale of this three-and-a-half-story building, its relationship to Hop Meadow, a two-and-a-half-story building across the street, with a three-and-a-half-story appearance from Iron Horse, and then how that all interrelates in a cross-section with what exists in town. If you look at it in isolation, three-and-a-half stories, close to Iron Horse, it appears large, and it's going to be a challenge for them to make it not look as large. Simsbury Shox is a very prominent building, from a footprint standpoint, but the way that it's placed on the landscape, it's not overwhelming. This is a very large building. This is of similar scale to their proposed multifamily, but it faces the street, and its appearance to the street is well thought of, and appreciated as an iconic, architectural, acceptable building in the community. That is their challenge.
It'll certainly look a lot better than the back end, Candy Center, or whatever you're talking about.
Correct.
But, and yet, we have a lot of interesting examples of multi-story buildings in town, the bank building, Simsbury Bank Building, the Eno, of course, and even Weldon Hardware that big brick building.
The 1820 House is a very large structure.
Yeah.
Set back off the road, but it's a very large structure.
As, as a maple tree, I understand, so it's larger than we think.
But all those things are where they belong.
Well, that's where we know they have to be.
It's where they belong.
Again, the challenge of a good architectural team in this urban fabric, again, you're recreating urban, you know, Simsbury suburban, but you have urban fabric in the core. It's how do we replicate that and respect that?
Yeah, and again, if this were five minutes out of town, we would probably be keeping the berms and keeping the trees and shielding it, but again, that's not this location, this location needs to tackle this challenge. Create that street furniture, that's what the code wants it to do, and it's what we think is appropriate as well.
And I plead to keep the more urban look of the center, rather than the suburban look of the outlining areas.
Just kind of make it a bit like, like it's been there over time.
He's the hard-
How do we pull the speech of brothers hardware, and how do we get that?
Not too shiny.
Not too shiny.
Do you have any concerns about the neighboring Performing Arts Center and the performances that occur there in the volume?
We see it as an amenity. We see it as an existing condition that folks will, will probably market actively.
Until they make you rent it, just buy a ticket.
Well, well, currently, if you were standing on, on Iron Horse Boulevard, you'd hear the show. So, I, I think what we-
But there's no rep, there's no, that, the, I'm just thinking of the band shell being, projecting that sound, right, basically, you know, I'm thinking in terms of the large buildings being along Iron Horse Boulevard, but there may be a consideration, I don't know if you do have a consideration, there is some green area there, but to buffer that so that the sound doesn't just project, right?
Yeah, I think we'll have to find, we want to find the right balance between that and making sure the visual connection is strong, and-
Right.
I think the way we've thought of it is, you're going to buy here because that's something that you see as an amenity.
It's better to have it there now.
Or, you know that there's-
It's not like we haven't exposed it.
Or that you know that there's ten nights a year when you go out to dinner and a movie in Avon, because that's the night that the performer didn't come home.
This is kind of an urban experience on a very small scale. And that's part of an urban experience, is that there's people walking around, you hear music sometimes.
And sometimes it's noisy, I mean, you know, but there's not sirens, it's not-
I like your rent ideas. My daughter just got an apartment with a roommate, 550 square feet, $3,300 bucks.
In New York, right?
In New York.
Yeah. And we need to be a little bigger by six to your eight inch or a feet, and we'll be a lot cheaper, a lot cheaper.
On the cheap commute.
Well, we like some of those-
You've got to get to the train back to Simsbury.
Twenty-year-olds.
She probably could.
When, when the applications are ultimately submitted, will the Planning Commission have a role? Will there be a subdivision?
Yes, from a regulatory standpoint, a couple of things have to occur. We mentioned the historic nature of Pent Road. The town actually owns an easement, or has, owns an easement through the middle of this site. So, you will see the project under 8-24, when that easement perhaps is slightly adjusted to the south.
Pen Road all the way to the river?
Pen Road all the way through.
Not too-
Right through the southern portion. This is actually three parcels. There's a northern parcel, a southern parcel, and then there's a westerly parcel right along Iron Horse Boulevard, very small sliver. The southern parcel contains an easement, that is, to the town, to pass and re-pass from the north, excuse me, from the west to the east and east to the west, through the site unobstructed. And that's a D dip. So, they may potentially need to make adjustments, and all the discussions we've had for seven months is honoring the placement of that, and that the town would perhaps be a partner in the relocation of that if the project is right. So, that will definitely come back to you under 8-24. Mr. Lake presented the, that there's four-and-a-half kind of quadrants associated with this, and there's always the potential, due to financing, that there is a subdivision that honors those quadrants, because ownership could be different. One, you know, one large developer may say, I'm going to take all of this on as a project manager, but I may divvy the, I may divvy it up. So, it could come back to you under your 8-26, and your subdivision-
So, even the single-family homes would be condos?
No, they'd be single-family, detached on the condo mount.
To be determined, yeah. I think all that stuff is, we always have to figure out the pros and cons, or do they meet the regulations if they're one way versus another way? So, I think that's-
The code gives them an ultimate flexibility, that you can have, there are lot lines on the code, there are a lot of things, but there are a lot of moving parts to-
So, the SC five-
Taking this development and making it into, we'll take the single, making it into a 90-lot subdivision with five large multifamily.
SC five overrides the, the conventional subdivision regulation?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, that's what was cool, the charrette.
Well, you don't like that in other situations.
That's because of the-
No, this is-
But in all aspects, this will land as a site plan approval at the zoning commission, which in all likelihood will be referred to you.
Okay.
And again, if it's a public road system, 8-24 brings it back to you, because the town would be accepting a road, which requires that to be referred to you. So, there, in some shape, way, or form, in all likelihood, you will either be advisory or wear a strong regulatory hat with regards to those references.
Mr. Gerard, given the, the current and past activities on this site, are there any environmental issues?
We have done the phase one on, on the southern property line, because there was the plume that was running across the fields from Indy's and Getty Station and so forth and so on. Anyway, to make a long story short, that plume is, is receding. So, we, that made tests, it was the first thing we did, was we made, we did soil tests and tests for the chemicals, it was clean. So, that was done. Also did, we did a couple of other phase, one ensi- and we did some other remediation, where we had a wash rack for the equipment, which we had to clean up. We know that there's probably some trolling, mostly oil or, or fuel oil, under the slab of the building, which would be, we can do that ourselves, that's something that we can actually take care of, we've done it, we've done it before. Other than that, I don't expect, we knew that we were going to develop the property, so we didn't go out of our way to do any kind of major pollution or anything like that to cause any problems. So, I don't, we, we-
Good for you.
No crazy parties.
You too.
Glad you had future plans for the site. I don't want to know what it would have been like without it.
So, we've got, so, we feel pretty, we, we have no, we have no problem with the environmental, the environment. We'll both write through it, make sure everything's clean.
You know, it's interesting to me, it takes a local guy to come up with something like this, somebody that understands this community. That's what I think's interesting.
Okay, while we, everyone's kind of-
Yep.
Said their, their piece.
Yep.
Okay, I hope you've heard our input.
Very much so.
From what I understand, from Mr. Rabbit, it's somewhat consistent with the other commissions, so that's good. We didn't-
Can I just commend, I, I think the plan, I mean, it, it sounds like you guys have put a lot of work and a lot of thought into it, so I, I just want to say that, I appreciate the thoughtfulness.
And I always look forward to seeing your progress on this, and I am very thankful for the respect of the sense of place and the history, and the views, and, and all of the work you've done on this, and-
I didn't answer your question on when we're going to start, right? I didn't answer that question. I kind of worked around it a little bit. We, I'd love to see something happen within the next eight, 10 months, and to get, to get the design process in place. I've got some serious people, people that are serious about buying it, but we've got to come to terms. But I'd like to see this go through the approval process this fall, and I'd like to see some, I'd like to see something started next year, probably next year.
I hope you have something up before my house needs to be painted.
See what we can do.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your excellent-
Sure? It's okay, so, Janice, just have the record show that Holly left at 8:40, please. Don't miss next meeting, Holly. It's going to be a good one.
I know.
I know you have. I have my attendance list. Okay. Mr. Rabbit, the next item is update on the plan, plan on conservation and development.
Mr. Chairman, just quick update, as I reported a few weeks ago, we did send the RQ out, we have three individuals respond, we're in the process of reviewing those. Alan, Bill, as well as Dave Ryan from the zoning commission have graciously volunteered to be part of the initial review, and I anticipate we start our conversations internally beginning, end of this week, beginning and next week, to try and find a meeting date where we can sit down, perhaps with Mr. Cook, to look at where we go next. I think, depending on the feedback, we may want to bring one or two of the responders forward to ask questions and vet their proposal a little bit more. But again, my goal is perhaps, as we get into August, that we possibly meet and make a decision, and then a recommendation to the full commission on who is retained to work on the next POCD.
I'm out of town.
Again, I think the responses were good, their approaches are good, it's just a matter of finding the most appropriate response and the most appropriate fit for the community. And again, we run the gamut from 50,000 to 120,000 with regards to proposed scope of services and fees.
Now, curiously enough-
All within our budget.
Yeah. A colleague of mine, does Granby have a combined planning and zoning commission? I think they do.
I think they do.
And they just concluded the, I'll call it the draft of their updated POCD. They did it all themselves. They did it with members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, town staff, and townspeople, all by themselves.
All I've got to say is I've been to Granby.
I, I respect any community that takes it on, and working with one community who chose that route to self-
Perform, yeah.
Perform. We are in our third year.
Oh, it took them four years.
And I am the primary author, I'm the primary editor, and the commission has had that product for a little over a month, and I'm waiting for final edits. So, you can go that route.
I wasn't necessarily suggesting.
But it is our choice. And I am also a strong believer of bringing a second set of eyes in with a different perspective of how the community is perceived from the outside, and how that expertise can help you enhance the vision of your own community, due to their experiences around the country and the world. It, you know, sometimes we view ourselves differently than someone else views ourselves. I've always been a proponent of signing POCs.
That's interesting you say that. Did any, any of you go to the, the Simsbury Performing Arts Center for the 4th of July?
Yes.
And Lisa Heffner got up on stage, and, you know, she's, oh, one of the best places to live in the country, blah, blah. How many people in attendance are from Simsbury? And here, and she goes, how many people are from out of Simsbury?
Hang on.
Like, three-quarters. So, that's drawing people into town. And this has, this proposal, it's got to be done nicely.
As commissioners, you have the fortunate aspect that people aspire to have a community as nice as you have, and you live here. And I think, and I, I live in a nice community, and a lot of people live in nice communities, and sometimes when we live in those communities, we lose the appreciation for the community that we actually live in. And bringing someone in from the outside, sometimes your mind slips off that, and those aspects.
And you're always two or three bad decisions away from screwing the whole place up.
Thank you for that word.
On that note-
I think about it every time.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Save us, Robert, save us.
I make a motion, will you, Janice?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.[1772.62]